I'd like to open the Town Board Work Session for September 14th. Could we join the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Supervisor's announcements, I have a letter here from our supervisor. On September 1st, Global Foundries completed the sale of over 300 acres and several buildings to National Resources for redevelopment. National has experience in redevelopment insights such as this. As can be seen in several of the established iParks, they are currently working on plans for the East Fishkill site. Redevelopment of the east and west former IBM campuses is a project that the town has been working on for some time, going back to the adoption of our priority economic redevelopment zone law back in 2014. Since that time, we have been forming water and sewer districts for the area, and we have identified roads that as public highways will serve the site while keeping impacts to our present road system to a minimum. National resource projects will be required to go through the regular approval process, and this sale is terrific news for those of us that wish to see the old site redeveloped. I'd like to open the work session, and I'd like to invite our guests if they'd like to give us a short report.
Great. My name is Jamie Fordice. I'm the Principal of Eastlight Partner. I'm here with Wendy DeWolf, my partner in Eastlight Partners. As you know, we're here to discuss a community solar project known throughout the state of New York as a community distributed generation project, which we have in planning behind Healan Road. We had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Hickman about a month back, discuss the project briefly, but we are in front of the ZBA currently seeking a use variance for the project. So, in the context of a community solar as it's been set up by the state, the project has the opportunity to sell its credits. They have a centralized location where the solar farm is to be built. The value of the energy as it's exported to the grid is measured at the meter, and then that value is sold to the local community. So, really, any ratepayer within Central Hudson's service area is eligible to sign up and receive the benefits of this solar generation. The project also has the opportunity to sell up to 40 percent of its output to an anchor customer. So, an anchor customer often would be a customer like a local municipality, or a large campus, an industrial campus, a college. But it helps the project have some certainty that there's going to be a singular customer purchasing the credits that the project produces for a period of 20 years or more. So, we've prepared a short presentation to walk through the current New York framework for these projects and how it's a policy which is in a bit of flux right now. Actually, just hours ago, the PSC, the Public Service Commission, issued its implementation order for the next round of solar projects. So, we're sort of trying to interpret that at the moment, but we have a preliminary idea of what it's going to look like, and we'd like to walk you through that. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
So, just a short outline. We'll tell you a bit about our company, a bit about the project, a bit about community solar, and this so-called VDER framework that's recently been implemented by the State Public Service Commission, and talk a bit about the property tax aspect or potential pilot agreement which would also be associated with the project. We are a renewable energy development team focused primarily in the Northeast. We're based in Boston and New York. We have developed over 30 megawatts of projects over the past four years. So, for context, this is a three-megawatt project. So, we've done about, you know, 10 projects of similar scale in, over the past few years. We're targeting regional development here in the Northeast. A lot of the opportunity for solar is driven by state-level policy like the policy we'll discuss tonight. And we're very focused on projects which are welcome in their host communities, which are contributing to what we see as a sort of sustainable energy future, and of course, projects which have a strong underlying business case and can survive throughout their life. A little bit about Wendy and myself, you can read about afterwards. We've been in this field for a while. I come primarily from a policy background, and policy drives a lot of what these projects live or die on, so that's where my expertise comes in. The project site is a 25-acre site on 28 Healan Road rear. The site happens to be landlocked with no direct street frontage. There is a right-of-way which is deeded through Power Road, so you see that the parcel is immediately adjacent to the Fishkill Plant Substation there, a large ConEd and Central Hudson substation. It's zoned R1, so that's why we were before the zoning board seeking a use variance for the project, because the town ordinance does not specify directly how solar energy projects are to be treated. Project layout. This is a project which is 2.8 kilowatts, sorry, 2.8 megawatts. It will generate 3,700 megawatt-hours, or 3.7 million kilowatt-hours per year. It's, that generation probably eclipses what the town uses, but if you consider that under the New York policy framework, we can sell up to 40 percent of that, that gives you some view for the quantity of the potential.
And we'll get to it a little bit later, but another part of the materials included is a analysis of the town of East Fishkill's energy consumption and kind of where, and putting that into a dollar form, so you'll be able to see kind of what the output of the facility is, what the 40 percent would be, and how that lines up with the actual usage of the town of East Fishkill.
Okay. Next slide, community solar. A community solar project is a solar installation whose generation is shared among many customers. Okay? So, the concept is, you know, not everybody has a roof that can accommodate solar. Even if they do, the orientation might not be such that it gets the most bang for its buck out of a dollar solar panel, if you will. You know, it's really important that these panels are properly oriented and are without shading to have it be a cost-effective means of generating electricity. So, you know, having a state policy which allows us to centralize and optimize a solar installation allows members of the communities to sort of participate in the benefits of solar power, even if, you know, they either can't or desire not to put solar on their roofs. This was established by the Public Service Commission in 2015. As I described, you know, we can have up to 40 percent of the credits go to an anchor customer, and sometimes we like to reserve a little band of less than 35 to 40 percent, because the balance of the credits will go to residential homes and smaller customers. And so, as we're thinking about the sale of 100 percent of the power, sometimes there's churn on the residential side in terms of what the demand is. Somebody might move and not be able to accept the credits. So, having the ability in an anchor agreement to step up the number of credits that are allocated to that anchor customer is certainly helpful. So, that's something we can get into.
Is that done quarterly, or what's the period in which that's adjusted? Is that quarterly, or?
No, it would be less frequent. It would be a lot less frequent than that. It would probably be, if anything, yearly. It wouldn't probably even be that. Most likely, it'll be set at a certain percentage for the life of the project. But if you reevaluate, it would probably be on a yearly basis.
Well, you said if somebody moved out of their house or out of their business and couldn't use the electricity, my understanding was that the town could then absorb that savings.
That's right.
It wouldn't go wasted. So, if you're only going to adjust it more than annually, you're still going to waste it.
Well, yeah, so we're going to get a monthly statement from the utility, just like you'd get a monthly utility bill, right? And so, us as the project, we get a statement. We've already determined of 100 percent of the credits that are produced by the facility, you know, the number of accounts, the meter numbers and percentage allocations to each, that'll automatically be credited out of that total 100 percent pie.
Right.
Out to each customer. If we have customer attrition on the residential side, we'd love to be able to still sell that power and allocate those credits out to the anchor customer who's positioned to take up more while.
The question is, how frequently do you do that? Do you make that adjustment?
It's.
Because you're talking about leaving the town's share a little bit low.
Yep.
Instead of high to absorb those.
Yep.
Credits that are not being used.
Yep. It's, so this is one of the areas that's still sort of being developed is the time lag between, you know, when the credits are produced and when they appear on the bill.
So, alternatively, if the town maxed out their share.
Yep.
And you wrote it out for a year, let's say.
Yep.
So, how much wasted credit you might have on the residential side, then the following year, you could make an adjustment to see how much you may lower the town's share in order to absorb. But you've still got to make sure that you're adjusting it frequently enough to make it all worthwhile.
That's right. And there is some ability to carry forward credits, right? So, it's not as if if we don't reallocate it in the month that we lost that customer, that's value out the door.
Right.
Okay? So, you know, I think in other states, and New York is working this out.
And it can be twofold, because you're losing that credit, plus if the town didn't take all of their credit, now it's twofold.
That's true. That's true. So, you know, we wouldn't want to, I guess it was, it's less likely that.
I guess that's the detail that has to be worked out, but the way you presented it, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, typically, in other states where community solar's been active for a while under a framework, you've got basically an annual true-up, right? Where at the end of the year, you have the ability to.
Make adjustments.
Make adjustments to that. In Massachusetts, called your Schedule C, where you have the scheduled percentages.
Yeah, it seems like you have to have some historical data behind you for a while before you start playing with the percentages.
That's right. That's right. So, to be determined, but I think, you know.
It's getting a little nuanced in terms of, you know, how we're thinking about credits, but.
Right.
I think once we go through the program, it'll be a little bit more clear.
Yep.
Are you limited to, I know that you're regulated by PSC.
Yes.
Are they limiting you to how many sites, different sites you could have in a town? Can you have more than one-site location?
Yes.
Yeah. There are other limiting factors. For instance, you know, from what the town decides from a local zoning perspective.
Right.
Or what the utility will allow from a physical interconnection perspective.
No, I think he's asking about how many sites of customers.
No, I'm asking how many sites that you could build in the same town.
Sorry, then I.
So that they would kind of address the issues of supply and demand. Is that regulated by PSC, or you could, if the town allows you, build more than one site? Okay.
We could. Probably can't just exceed the total demand in the town. I mean, that would be your cap, right?
That's right.
Because the town can't sell outside the town. Is that correct?
That's right. You can't resell the credits.
So, we'd never reach it, but that's the cap, I mean.
Okay.
You can sell outside the town.
We can sell outside the town.
The power can go anywhere in the Central Hudson service area.
Okay. But our credits have to stay within the town.
Right. Well, they want an anchor that would stay within the town of 30, 35, 40 percent is what they're proposing here.
Right.
But as far as the siding of it, as they've indicated, has to be connectable into the utility. So, in this site, it's right next to the appropriate infrastructure that Central Hudson would allow the connection. We could regulate it under our zoning. This particular piece of property is actually zoned residential, and they've applied to the zoning board for a use variance, because as they said, it's landlocked, next to the utility, et cetera. So, it really may not have any value as residential, so the zoning board can grant a use variance to allow this solar area to go forward, so. But as far as other areas, you could, in zoning, say, here and there, if you wanted to.
Right. The town will, I mean, the town has a certain amount of energy usage, and we can't exceed, you can't buy more energy than you use. You know, you can't buy more from a solar project than you use. And we can walk through the numbers towards the end of the presentation, but, you know, I think we'd find that one project, maybe two, would probably cap you out at all of your energy usage, so it's a question.
This one project would cap you guys out.
One project would, so.
Have you done any of these with other towns yet?
Oh, sure.
In your state, no. If that's the answer to you, because that's the question.
Yes.
Because it will actually, where it lines up, so this new program, the Value Distributed Energy Resources Program, is going to effect November 1st. So, it actually hasn't even existed in the past. Yeah, so that's why we're, in the past.
The other town, the other states that you've done this in?
Mm-hmm.
Do they have to bid everything?
Bid it out as a, as a.
As a supplier.
In the past, we haven't had to do it that way. I think it's kind of on the town, it depends on from town to town, they decide to do it differently.
And you mentioned that Massachusetts is one state that you've been doing a lot of business in.
Correct.
Have they crafted zoning laws to allow this? Or each municipality?
Each municipality.
Okay, so same for us, okay.
You know, similar, there's similar efforts in New York, but there's a model.
Same as New York.
The state will put forth a model ordinance, and towns can adopt it or modify it or not.
New York's actually at a very interesting point right now, because this is a new program, and like, you know, Massachusetts has kind of had its program for a while at this point. It's been five-plus years that they've had the program, and now New York is kind of getting to that point where they put in a new program. They're very excited about this new program, and they feel like they've improved upon some of the other states' programs that exist. And, you know, they're working to get all the pieces in place. So, for example, they're putting out materials for municipalities, including, you know, information on how to structure pilot agreements and example materials and things like that to facilitate the adoption of solar, and kind of as seeing it as this opportunity going forward as compared to other states that may have done already or who are even lagging behind.
Are those all your places on the Mass Pike?
No.
No.
They're not ours.
I get that question a lot, though.
I see those every time I drive through there.
High-visibility projects. Be nice to have.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, in the future, windmills become the next big thing, and these solar panels go by the wayside. Do you remove the solar panels, or what happens in that case?
No, we don't. I mean, when we build a project, it's.
You know, down the road, I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Five years down the road.
It's normally a 20-year agreement, right?
Yeah.
It's a 20-year agreement. We've got, you know, in this case, we're purchasing the property, but in other cases, we've got a lease for 20 years and a power purchase agreement for 20 years, and.
Now, do you guys just design it and then contract it out for somebody to build, or you do the whole thing?
We.
We contract it out for someone to build.
Yeah, we have a relationship with a construction firm that we work with on almost all of our projects.
But you remain the owner of it?
We retain ownership.
Yeah. Have you sold any of your other ones?
Yes.
Is that common, where you start it and then you sell it in a rather?
Once it's constructed, once it's through over the.
Then you sell it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, that's typical in a lot of energy development, where it's a very different business to take on the risk of development than it is to take on the risk of operation, if that makes sense.
Right.
So, the different types of capital is.
And how many different operators do you, that you've sold to? Is it normally one certain operator, or that waits for you guys to sell, or is it like a big competition, a big bid bidding war for it?
It depends on the project. I think we tend to have, it kind of goes back to, we like, we only typically work with people we trust to own and operate our projects well. And so, I think that if we, you know, we're pretty rigorous in our due diligence on who purchases these, if the people do purchase these projects. We actually have specific relationships as well with, you know, people who are similar to our relationship with this construction contractor, we have relationships with long-term owner-operators who, you know, are part of the project essentially from day one. So, I think that there are relationships we have, and we're pretty selective.
Yeah, I'd say we've done repeat business with, you know, certain operators that, you know, we trust their integrity and their ability to bring the project through.
How much of a say does the town have in, at the time that you decide to sell your project to somebody else? Does the town come in and say, overlook the sale as far as who's going to be the next buyer?
No.
Or is it something between?
You'd a public service commission would do that.
Okay.
Not the town, yeah.
Yeah, typically, there's.
The sale of any utility is usually reviewed and approved by the public service commission in New York, so.
Have you ever sold one of these to a municipality?
We haven't personally. It is done. I mean, if a.
Because it's another utility, like water and sewer.
Right.
Sure. Sure.
So, if somebody else is willing to buy it, make a profit.
Yep.
Could the town acquire it?
Yeah, no, and we've actually had a lot of conversations.
Save our residents a little bit on their utility bill.
Sure. That happens.
That does happen?
It does.
All right, so it's not that far.
No.
The thing you got to be careful about a little bit is that a key aspect of the financing of these projects is a tax credit, and that tax credit only, it's an investment tax credit, so that only accrues to taxable entities.
Taxable entity.
So, if this is a million-dollar project, there's a $300,000 tax credit that someone gets to apply against a liability they might have. And so, there's, that's often why we have to bring in other investors at the, we don't have a $300,000 tax liability. We need to bring in an investor that has that in order to efficiently capitalize the project. But, given where cost of capital's going, in the debt markets versus what, you know, a municipality could issue a bond for, there's a crossover point where it's cost-effective.
There's some point where it's cost-effective.
Yeah.
But it might have to be a much larger project than this.
Yeah, or maybe it happens at year six. So, basically, there's a recapture period on the tax incentive, and so, in year six.
We've become the second owner, so to speak.
Yeah, exactly.
Going back to what the engineer said before about when these have had their useful life, the removal.
Yes.
What was the answer? Who removes them?
We remove them. The company removes them.
Okay.
In this case, because we own the property, there's no reason that we have to remove it after year 20. So, that in, because we, they have a useful life of up to 40, 50 years. So, for example, we have a project in New Jersey. It's a lease of a landfill at the Air Force Base down at Fort Dix. It's, the project itself is, how many times the size, is about five times the size of this project in East Fishkill, and that one is a 40-year lease with the Air Force. So, will be operating for 40 years. So, I think our intention with this project is, you know, 20 years, you know, I mean, we could do a 40-year, you know, utility contract with the town. I think it's just not typical that people see that or commit to that. But, you know, 20, 30-year contract, we could consider, and then after that, you know, who knows where we're going to be in terms of energy policy then, but it would still be a productive facility.
No, I think our question's more is, say you stop producing and you leave.
We would be, we would.
We want it gone.
Yes, is what they're saying. No, absolutely.
You know, it's like the towers and the windmills and stuff, you know, that's.
You don't want to.
That was basically what it was there for.
Turn into heaps.
Right.
That abandoned tower doesn't sit in his backyard for 20 years after they're gone. That's, I think that's where we're really going with the question.
Yes. Yes, decommissioning is part of the industry standard, essentially. It's considered when projects are financed that you're going to have to have some sort of, you know, starting in year 10 to 15, that you'd have, start setting capital aside to.
Now, replacement of the panels and stuff like that, how often do you have to do that?
You don't for the 20-year period.
No?
No. Unless something happens where panels, you know, become so inexpensive and so much more productive that it makes sense to repower a facility, but that hasn't happened yet.
So, I mean, you know, occasionally, if you're mowing the vegetation and a mower knocks a panel and it cracks, then you'll.
Or a tree blows down.
Yeah, a tree blows down, or golf ball.
It'd have to be a lot.
It's not going to be a golf ball, but, you know, I mean.
They're pretty sturdy, so it'd have to be like a really, you know, it would have to be more than.
But we do, I mean, we keep spares to replace singular panels, but wholesale replacement is going to happen after the warranty of life of the panel, which is a standard 25 years at this stage, so. At the end of the life of this, I mean, we went over, at the end of the life of this project, at the end of 25 years, we'll make a decision, you know, we're there, we've got an interconnection to the grid, we own the parcel, we don't know what energy markets are going to look like in 25 years, but it's more likely than not that it'll make sense to refurbish the facility and keep it in operation.
But at least for the next 20 years, it'll be operating under this. The lifetime of this program is 25 years, actually, if you put in the term of Value Distributed Energy Resources. It's a really interesting program because it's really focused on valuing the solar for what it's really worth to the grid. So, there's, if you turn to, I don't think I have page numbers, but the Value Distributed Energy Resources page, it kind of shows the different pieces that build up into what they're calling the value stack. So, basically, for every kilowatt hour of energy we produce from the solar facility, it is going to have all these benefits to the grid, which it's now, which the utilities and the PSC have set values to, and that's going to be issued then as a credit, which gets applied, it's almost like a coupon, that gets applied to the, an account, your electricity bill. So, essentially, you're going to, you know, you're going to get a dollar value on your electricity bill, it's how much energy you use at this given kilowatt-hour rate, and it's going to come up to, let's say, the town pays about $100,000 for its electricity for all its services, it's all its buildings every year. And then, we're going to say, okay, well, here's a credit for about $100,000. So, it's going to, you're going to see a $100,000 line, then you're going to see a minus $100,000 line, and that would be how, you know, whatever the distance is of what the credit is, maybe you paid, you know, $125,000, and you're buying $100,000 worth of credits, then that's going to, that'll be the, you know, it's the coupons on your bill. And so, the way they determine the value of these coupons, again, is back to, so there's a piece of it that's energy, which is, you know, the value of the way the energy markets work, it's, it'll be a daily value essentially based on, you know, in the summer, energy costs more than it does in the winter. Then you have capacity, so it's the fact that like, you know, if someone turned on the lights, is energy available for them? And then, there's the environmental benefit of a solar facility that adds to the grid of displacing other resources. And then, avoided demand, as it's talking about, so again, this is like reducing the stress on the grid, the load on the grid. And then, there's related to that as well, is there's something called locational system relief value, and, which is, you know, where the solar facility is, benefits, so if it's in a high-load area, so for example, actually, Fishkill and the Fishkill Plant Substation happens to be an over, a high-demand substation, it's going to be lowering the, it's going to be adding to the resources of Central Hudson by lowering the demand on the grid. So, that's how they're pulling together the value. Then there's for community solar, there's an extra, something called a market transition credit, which doesn't apply, it only applies to residential customers, so I won't focus too much unless you guys have questions about it, but it's another piece of the value stack. So, on the next page, you kind of see it come together and where that value comes out to. And we can base these, we have a sense of what the total value stack's going to be in terms of a dollar amount, based on projections of energy capacity and what they've determined to be the locational and demand values for different areas. So, we get that from the utility. So, the concept of this, of the way this utility credit work, would work, right, is that we would produce the utility, we would produce the energy, it has that value in the credit, it earns these credits. These credits are then applied to your bill, and then you would pay the project for the credit. And the amount that you would pay the project, typically, let's just say, it would be at a discount, not only would then you be supporting the community solar, you know, the community solar and the clean power in your, in the area, but the credit would be worth, we'd give it at a discounted rate. So, let's say for every dollar of credit you get, you'd only pay 95 cents for it.
And where does that number come from? 95 cents? Could it be 94? Could it be?
Yeah, it comes on, you know, what the.
74.
74. It's not going to be 74. It's based on what the project can support in terms of the revenue of the project, and one of the things is, you know, that's changed a little bit about when you're very precisely valuing the energy to the grid, is that there's less room.
It's not a prescribed number. It's something that is, you'll calculate what you can afford. It's not a prescribed number. It's something that is, you'll calculate what you can afford to offer. So we're basically paying 95 cents on a dollar.
Exactly.
We're saving 5 cents on the dollar.
We're saving, yeah. What happens if the credit, whatever it turns out to be, is more than our bill? Are we committed to buying credits that we don't need, or?
So-
Is that the lost credits that we talked about before?
Yeah, so, so you're, you're talking about the value of the credit or the quantity of credits?
Well, let's say we, the, the project generates 100,000, 40% of $100,000.
Sure.
Or of the project, turns out to be $100,000, but we only had bills totaling $95,000.
Sure. We'd want to think about that upfront and make sure that circumstance didn't, didn't happen.
Yeah, and there's two things. One is we size the project.
Right, size your purchase.
Size the purchase enough to give you rooms that wouldn't be a concern.
Because if we did, what would happen?
And then tool two, if it did happen, credits do, it depends how much it happened, but credits would roll over. So for, let's say for like a year, you didn't use as much energy, but the year after, you used a ton of energy, you'd be able to use those credits from the year before.
How long will they roll over for? For one year?
They roll over, because this has changed in the last thing.
It's recently changed, so I don't have an immediate answer.
I'm pretty sure it, it rolls over from year to year. Like it's, it's, you know, if you use, it would roll over from year to year, but let's say you, you know, all electrons are equal, so like you can-
It's kind of like a take or pay, but not on a daily basis, but on whatever, you know, but you have the rollover to help hedge that, but-
That's right.
It is part of-
Kind of like a take or pay.
That's, that's the concept. I mean, it needs, it needs to be a, a take or pay for us.
Right.
To finance it.
E-debt commitment, right.
But we don't want you to, you know, sign up for something that you're not comfortably sure you're going to take.
We come in at half of our need or something like that.
Right, you've got to hedge that number.
That we're really comfortable to be sure we'll hit that.
Or 75% or something like that.
75%, we'd have some number that-
And I think part of what's, what's great about this New York program is the fact that you're really evaluating the solar for what it's worth. What's more challenging, right, is it's not correlating directly with your kilowatt hour usage. So like in the past, net metering has been the program in New York. So like, you use one, you know, we produce one kilowatt hour, you lower one kilowatt hour, a very direct relationship. But now it's very much in terms of, of this is the value of the energy you put here, and this is the value that, you know, of the bill that you're paying and that, and, you know, that's, that's how we're, those things have to overlap as opposed to the direct kind of volume metric relationship that there was before.
Yeah, that's an important distinction, because that's change, that's what's changing here. So it used to be that we produce a kilowatt hour at our facility, you guys use a kilowatt hour at your facility, and we have an agreement of what the value of that kilowatt hour is. And it's either in the money or out of the money in the context of our agreement. Now, the value that we, it's recognized that the value that we create at the solar facility is not going to be the same as the value of a kilowatt hour that you guys consume. And so we're just racking up monetary credits, right? So in a month, we might rack up $100 worth of credits, and we're just assigning that monetary credit to you guys. We're not assigning 1,000 kilowatts to you guys. We're assigning $100 to you guys, and you guys are paying us a discount on the dollars, as opposed to you guys taking the risk that you committed to buy kilowatt hours at 10 cents and your actual retail, from the solar project, and your actual retail rate is 8 cents.
Which is what, how it's happened in basically in Massachusetts and in other states, is that you would, you would buy a kilowatt hour for a certain value and say that this kilowatt hour, I'm, you know, going to pay you, you know, 13 cents for the kilowatt hour, you know, escalating it 2% for the next 20 years. And then, you know, you're taking the risk that energy prices are never going to go below.
So it's, it's simpler from a risk perspective from the town. The only risk that you face is that you signed up for more than you can take in terms of dollar amount. But-
But we're still paying at 95 cents on what we signed up for.
Correct.
But that's why you do it as a percentage.
But you'll always be in the money.
That's why you want to hedge that number, right?
Because the other way to do it, there's two ways to do it, right? We could say, we, we think this value of this credit is going to be 10 cents for the, you know, next 20 years, or, you know, escalating to 10, about that, right? And we could say, well, you should pay us 10 cents for, for each, or, you know, nine, nine and a half cents for each of the credit. But what, but who knows, that credit could become, you know, 14 cents, or it could become 6 cents. And so we wouldn't want, we're taking away that risk by saying, we're just going to make it a percentage. So we're not sure what the, you know, you're not going to be able to project the exact dollar value. It's going to be worth in your bill, but I can promise you, you're always going to save money.
Right. It'll never be out of the money. So we wear all that risk. We wear the risk, you know, when we're projecting our revenues for the project, we don't have the certainty that the town's going to give us 10 cents for every kilowatt hour. Yeah, we're, we, the value of our kilowatt hour is going to move, and we don't have any hedge against that. That's, that's the challenge of the new program for projects and developers.
From a financing perspective, but-
But it makes your life a lot easier because you don't wear any risk.
But back to the risk part, let's just say storm, or cloud cover, or snow, whatever, and you're not producing as much as you think you're going to produce.
Yep.
We're in that boat with you, or we still get that credit that we?
We're going to have a smaller number.
You get less safe.
Flow with you.
You're going to get, yeah, because you're, we're, because you're a percentage too.
Producing less.
Yeah, you, you are always getting savings. You might get more or less savings, but on a unit value, you're always getting-
You have a 5% savings on some number.
Right.
Right.
And that number's going to go up and down.
Okay.
Yeah.
So plenty of time to unpack that stuff.
This might be outside the bidding room.
Took me forever to get my head around it.
I'm sure you're not buying the lot.
No, and it is very, it's pretty complicated. And it's one of the things that I think has been probably the biggest comment to the PSE, because, you know, we, they go through all these stakeholder processes, and there's been a lot of comments. And, and part of it is like, you know, this is great, but it's very complicated. And, you know, it's much easier, you know, and for example, the new program in Massachusetts and Rhode Island is, you get this value for the next 20 years. And you bid on it in year one, and you get that value for 20 years. And actually, they take in the off-taker out of it, you just get a contract with the utility. So like you're, they really simplified it. When New York tried to do is say, we're going to get this precise value, but it's going to be a little bit, it's going to give everyone a headache, but we're going to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it does add the risk factor, which is hard to wrap your head around as well.
Anything else?
The only thing to, more before we get to the next section, as I mentioned, about, from, from a kilowatt hours perspective, 40% is about 1.3 million credits per year.
Yep.
And then that's worth about $100,000. And if we go through your projections, obviously, we'd have to fine tune this, because it'd be very important ever to, you know, to get to a level that everyone's comfortable with. But you keep a, a starting point for that. And I can also send this as an Excel document to anyone who wants to look at it, is this was, this is a list of all the accounts in, for the East Fishkill, and how much you paid, and over the past two years. And so that, that, you know, how much their kilowatt hour usage was, and how much that total cost was, as indicative of the past two years. Do you want to talk about pilot?
Sure. So, so there's, there's a potential arrangement we have on the sale of credits. Obviously, solar property is, is taxable. There's actually an exemption for solar property in state, I don't want to get too in front of myself here, but there's an exemption which, which towns can opt out of.
Opt out of.
Okay? If you opt out, then you have the ability to tax the, the solar property from a property tax point of view. It's highly beneficial to the project, and oftentimes to the town to enter into a pilot agreement, so that we have the certainty with respect to what our tax liability for the project will be over town, over time. And when we bring that to our, our financing, there's less risk in the project in that respect. And so it's more cost effective as a project. There's been a lot of work done by NYSERDA and a large stakeholder group to determine an appropriate level of, of pilot assessed to solar projects. And so we've, and, and they've broken it out by utility service area. So here, we've put basically the summary table from that stakeholder process, and we can sort of forward, there's a sample pilot agreement. There's also a lot of background documentation associated with that process. But roughly, the recommended value from the state is somewhere between $2,600 to $7,600 per megawatt per year. So this is a, East Fishkill, the size that it is, you know, there would be, in addition to the benefits accruing to the town from the energy purchase agreement, you know, something in the range of 5,200 to 15,200 per year in the, in the form of a pilot agreement. So that's something that's, you know, they're two separate conversations, but they both impact the project. And it's hard to have one discussion around what level of discount we can, the project can afford to offer the town on the credits without some certainty on what the town's going to charge us from a, from a taxation point of view. So we just, we raise it here, and we kind of look to you guys as to how, what the right sort of phasing of that discussion in the town.
And both are additional value to the, both are providing the value to the town, so it's worth having a conversation in conjunction.
But it, it's roughly a 3-megawatt project.
It's a 2, yes. It's a 3-megawatt project, DC. This is AC. It's a 2-megawatt fraction. That's why I may have miscalculated that. No, no, I did it right.
Which is 2.8, right?
Nope, it's 2. It'll be a, so if we're in Central Hudson, the highest I would be 2 times 7,600.
I thought we said 3 earlier. That's the only reason.
It's 2.8 DC, but if you see that these are in AC, these calc, in the chart, so it's like the, the limit in New York State right now of how much you can put into the grid is, this is like when it comes out, like when power runs through the lines, it's in AC. When we produce fire, our facility is in DC. Direct current, alternating current.
So when, when the state goes through a, a process like this, the AC valve, nameplate capacity in, in alternating current is, is sort of a normalizing factor, because every, every project's going to be different in terms of the appropriate DC to AC ratio. So that's sort of where we are there. So that's, you know, that's an introduction to the project, to potential arrangements we could enter into, word of interest. And we just want to be here for any questions you guys may have. All of this, you know, we don't want to get in front of our permitting process either, from a zoning perspective. So this is just a, a means of introduction, introducing the, the conversation.
Now, the rest of it would be sold to regular people.
Correct.
How would they purchase it in the end?
So we're going to work with third party who's going to, who, they're basically these community solar aggregators who go to farmers' markets and, you know, and sell these-
Like Veridian and stuff like, like-
Well, they'd be different than Veridian.
They go out to sell like those people though.
But, yeah, I mean, a similar model. You go in direct to the consumer and trying to attract interest in supporting the project.
And signing a contract. And they would have the same thing. It would be these utility credits assigned to their bill, and they would see these coupons at the end of the month on their electric bill.
So people who couldn't put it on their own property, this is, right.
And it's people anywhere in Central Hudson. I think, you know, we're, we'd like to start with East Fishkill in terms of where we're going to center our strategy to start.
And your bill would come one time, you'd get the same bill from Central Hudson with just a credit line on it?
They're currently figuring this out. In the order that came out today, I think they finalized that you're going to get the same bill. Because like part of that, right, part of the complication is you get a bill, you know-
Usage and service or whatever it is.
They're trying to streamline it, and that's been a key stake, the bill has been a key stakeholder discussion.
Yeah. That's the objective, is you get one bill, it's simple, you pay it, you know, the money flows where it should go. So.
So can I ask, usually, what I read, that usually one megawatt, you need about six acres. So why didn't you utilize more of the property? You're only utilizing about, there's 2.8, so you're going to use like 17 acres or so.
So there's two reasons. We're using about 14 acres. The main reason has to do with the, or the, one of the main reasons is that the PSE limits to the 2-megawatt AC that you can interconnect to the grid. Now, it's going to change next year. They're going to increase it hopefully up to 5 megawatts, but right now, there is not a mechanism to have a distributed project under this program that's bigger than 2-megawatt AC. Second is that a lot of the property is wet. And, and we wanted, we had to keep-
On that one side, right?
On the one side by, by the creek. And so we had to keep, we wanted to make sure we had ample room to-
Get in and out.
Well, and to have the, the appropriate buffer, 100-foot buffer.
Right.
And to keep an appropriate distance from the neighbors.
Okay. This is the largest project we can, we can do right now, both from a program perspective and almost from a site perspective. We might be able to go a little bigger on the site, but-
So you might be a little bit of expansion room in it.
I, if it's, if it's not another megawatt, we're probably not going to go through the hassle to, to revise our site plan and go through the permitting. It probably will stay as the project it is. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, and I think you have our contract information, Gina has our contract information, so you have any follow-up questions, please feel free to send us an email or give us a call, and we'd be more than happy to come on.
Yeah, I'll leave some cards here if anybody wants to come on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Move on to open discussion on any clubs or groups or whatever you got going on?
You mean liaison?
Tom, anything? Liaison report.
So I'll give, I want me to start it?
Sure.
Okay. Bumped you.
Go ahead.
For recreation, the fall season has begun. Basketball registration is still going on. You can contact the recreation office. We had a, a chance at getting the John Jay High School, they, they replaced their, their football fields and their lights. And we had a chance to get their lights. And we were going to put them out on Field 5 and all the other locations. We were very excited about it. I went with some guys from the highway, we'd take a look at the lights, and John Jay cut all the poles in half. So we're not going to get the lights. Thanks, but-
Were they wood poles or metal poles?
No, metal poles.
Cut them in half.
Cut them in half. The poles would have been nice. That would have been a-
Would have been nice.
Yeah, that would have been. And quickly, on our Hometown Heroes project, the Councilman, Dela Sandro and I have been doing, the project is still going strong. Requests still come in. There'll be a booth at Community Day with a Hometown Heroes display and some information for anyone who would like to take part of the program. The banners will be coming down just after Veterans Day, and we will work to get them back up around Memorial Day next year. Many requests for hanging the banners, people have been asking for certain parts of town. We are really trying to do our best. We cannot guarantee any of them, but the Highway Superintendent has, has done his best to get them up where, where they have been requested. And we've seen that we've got so many banners right now that we're going to have to expand. And more than likely, we'll start putting them out next year in Stormville, because I know we have some banners up there that were, family members are from Stormville, so we can start putting them there next year. And one quick thing, I would just like to thank everyone who came out and voted on Tuesday. We had several primaries and elections, and it was great to see everybody come out, and just very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Manny, anything?
Well, something about Community Day, as we all know, this year, there's some changes going on. We start in the parade a little later. We are trying to, we will keep the community at the rec area pretty much the afternoon. We have a great response from the vendors. We're going to have a lot of activities for the children, teenagers. There's going to be a movie show on that day. Fortunately, we are not going to have fireworks. We had planned on it, but at the last minute, we decided not to for strategic reasons, I believe. But it's going to be a fun day, so I hope the community, I believe, as of right now, the weather is going to be nice. And it would be nice for the community to come out and enjoy this beautiful event. As far as something from Elsal Lake, some community members have given me something for the members of the board to look at. And they asked me to read these few lines that they put down. This is not coming from me, but from some members of the community. And so the Town Plan B says the, the paragraph, first paragraph, will not be acceptable plan for Elsal Lake community, as you would immediately forfeit the 750, $775,000 in grant money. It was applied for municipal use and is available to municipality, not private property. Paragraph two, the Town Plan A proposal is not a plan that pertains to the New York State General Municipal Law, Article 17A. State General Municipal Law, Article seventeen A at all. The law, New York State General Municipal Law, Article seventeen A stipulates only the electors within the district to be dissolved are the electors that shall go to the voting booth to vote for, under dissolution and the plan, to associate a town-wide referendum of three million dollars for the repairs amounts to a clocked town-wide vote to dissolve the district. The town still must come up with a plan to put forward to the electors of Hillside Lake Park District. Paragraph three, the town has brought up the subject of repairing rights as it pertained to town storm waters entering Hillside Lake. The proposed size for renewed, renewed filtration system primarily fits onto the property recently, recently purchased to facilitate defiltration system. The current controversy of property ownership should not be an impediment to moving forward with installation of the renewed filtration system. The existing drainage today already dissects the area in question that is designed to facilitate the new system. The statement says, "These are all manufactured bureaucratic red tape to do nothing." Again, this does not come from me, certain members, they asked me to bring this to the attention of the board, and have done so. I don't know if anybody has any comments about this that wants to address tonight, since this is our, our time to discuss some of these issues, so I'm opening the floor to anybody that wants to address any of these comments.
Being the liaison, what do you think of the comments?
Well, I think I expressed my feelings about this at the last meeting that we had, Town Board meeting. Things have happened that have stopped this project from going on the way we had planned to go on from, from the beginning, when we discussed and we planned on a certain way to address the Hillside Lake property and the lake itself. Again, I said that that, you know, reducing the size of the lake, keeping most of the material over there, probably would be the least expensive project that we could put together, but then we had the grant that came in, and we abandoned that idea, and we went on to working with the grant. I would have liked seeing probably the grant work, put the grant to fruition, do the filtration system implementation, but prior to that, I would have liked to see the lake size reduced and, you know, continue it to a smaller lake.
So, excuse me, you want to reduce the, the size of the lake first, then?
Not me personally, this is something that we had discussed together. If you remember when you met with.
Right, yeah, when we had our focus groups, yeah.
Right. So, there was something that the community and us kind of agreed, and we presented to the town supervisor.
I, I still like my plan, I'm sorry, but I, where you were saying, get the grants going again, then after the grants are completely done, then we wait one year to see where, where we are. Then we get the community all involved, and we sort of get some sort of consensus as to what to do with the lake. So, I'm, I'm still in favor, I don't know, I'm disagreeing with some here, of, of taking the lake. So, are you in favor of us taking?
Well, you know, I guess, I guess, yes, I am in favor of that, you know, the community has decided to dissolve the lake.
Right, to dissolve the district.
So, it is their, I guess, request to the town, now the town, we have to decide what we want to do with this property. We had a few discussions, and then we had a lot of argumentation between certain members of the board and the community. I mean, you guys have asked me my opinions, this is my opinion, I would like to hear what some other members have to say without, you know, addressing what we're discussing rather than shooting statements that are not conducive to an agreement. I don't know, Nick, what do you think?
Well, coming, I, I like your idea that we had for a Plan B to reduce the size of the lake, I, I am in agreeance with you, but we can do that and also do the, the stormwater grant, correct? We can do the stormwater grant that we have, and then, and also reduce the size of the lake.
It's got to be engineered, I mean, you have to make the two fit, right now the stormwater project is geared towards.
That size of the lake.
They have the current shoreline, so to speak, so if that shoreline moves three-hundred feet or five-hundred feet, it's a different animal, I mean, so, that hasn't been looked at, it would have to be looked at.
Okay, but it's a possibility.
Possibility.
Okay. Well, yeah, if, if, if the one plan we, is going to be on the ballot this November, and if that doesn't pass, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of, like you said, to, to make the lake smaller, to push that out, like we said.
You're not, I don't think in any way we're looking at losing the grant.
In any way, I don't want to lose the grant.
Right, I don't think in any way we're really looking at losing the grant. Well, nobody wants to lose the grant.
No.
But you need, my opinion, we still need to know where the money's coming from.
Right.
And how much money we got. We all want to buy twenty megawatts of power, but do we have the money to buy twenty megawatts of power? I mean, you got to know how much money you got and how you're going to pay for it.
Oh, I totally agree.
I mean, we're not the federal government where we can just build bonds and do it, I mean.
That's why I said there's no rush as to doing something right away, doing, fulfilling the grants and then waiting.
No, I think, I think you owe the residents the right to have an idea of what's going to be done. We can sit there and say, okay, we'll take the lake, we'll spend our grant money, and then we got no money for twenty years. How does that help?
I understand that, but my thing is wait one year, and then you bring people in, and then you get some sort of consensus.
No, no, no.
It'll be a lot easier to sell to the public.
So, you want to wait one year before we take the lake?
No, I want to wait one year before we put forth any sort of bond.
Well, that, that has passed. It's going to be on the ballot in November, so to say that, it really doesn't, I don't know why you're saying that, but.
Because I think it'll be a lot easier to sell to the public, because you'll have some sort of consensus when you start bringing in people from outside of Hillside Lake, and then we all determine exactly what it is that we're going to do with the lake, what the public wants to do with the lake.
And then if we find out we've got no money, that we spent our seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on the thing and the project ends.
Then we do our, we do, and then if we don't have the money to do it, and I still believe anything, any, anything that has to be done to the lake that's going to cost money has got to go to the voters. I've said that from the beginning, we've all agreed with that. I just think, my own personal opinion, if we wait the year after we see what the, the results of the grants are, then we bring in the community, the entire community, not just Hillside Lake, since the town's going to take the lake, and then we determine something and have a consensus, and then sell it that way. I know it's too late now, but that's, and I've discussed this with you guys before, that, that was my view.
Could I just clarify one thing in, in paragraph two? It is absolutely correct that there will be a dissolution plan, absolutely correct. Whatever the results of the issue on, on Election Day with the bond, this board still, by early December, has to come up with a dissolution plan. So, whether that bond passes or not, there still has to be a plan adopted by the board, put out to a public hearing of the community, and then if the community doesn't agree with the plan, they have the right to have another vote. It's a permissive referendum, not a mandatory. So, just to, to clarify, this paragraph two, the, the rights of the people of Hillside Lake under Article seventeen A are still preserved, they will be followed by the board. The only thing is that if the bond passes, then the board knows, whatever plan they do can cost up to three million dollars. If the bond doesn't pass, then the board knows they have to work with that parameter. But clearly, there would be a dissolution plan and seventeen A, I've said that before at the other meeting, it's in my memo to the board, so I just wanted to clarify that.
So, in that, so they were talking about seventeen A, Tom.
Right.
The timeframe of that.
Seventeen A, as you know, they filed the petition, we had the vote in May, I, I don't remember days, I'll just use months. Then, this board discussed it at their June workshop, and the law says that the board then has six months to prepare a dissolution plan and bring it to the public. So, June would bring it, I think it would be like the latter part of November, early December. The plan is then put out by the Town Board, here's a proposed plan, you schedule a public hearing date within the time period they prescribed, and you hold your public hearing, and then the board takes a vote. You either approve the plan or disapprove it.
Correct.
Okay? Whatever your action is, if you approve it or disapprove it, the community then has the right to file a petition and force another vote, just of the residents of the district, to vote as to whether the plan should or shouldn't, you know, depending upon your vote, whether you should be supported or overruled.
So, my question is, let's say that the referendum passes, or let's say that the referendum doesn't pass. What is our plan?
Well, that, that's what you, so that would be, you could.
That's, I believe.
You could still take over the lake as a town-wide property, do nothing except the grants, use the grant money. You could come up with some other proposal for a smaller project, I mean, that's all still on the table for the board.
I, I think what you just mentioned is probably a little bit different than what we heard from the last few months, when you say that if it doesn't pass, we could accept the lake and use the grant money.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, well, if you accept the lake, you're taking over.
As far as property, property ownership, which was an issue.
Well, yes, but if you read my memo, which I think has been misinterpreted by some, I referenced a quiet title action, which is known as a bar claim action, so if the board, the Town Board said, okay, we'd like to go forward to do that, prudence would provide, we would do a bar claim action, we would terminate those rights and issues, clear title, get insurance policy from a reputable title company to ensure Town of East Fishkill has title to that. It's a procedure that's provided for, not in municipal law, so no one should ask me about what municipal laws, it's in the Civil Practice Law and Rules, it's a procedure when people have adverse claims to property, it's a process you go through to clear up once and for all. So, we would seek to terminate any issue about the reverter, we would seek to terminate any property owner's rights to membership in the Hillside Lake Property Owners Corporation, it would put it all to rest with that kind of a process. So, that, if the town is going to go that path, that would be part of the process, it wouldn't per se hold up anything, but it would be something we would have to do to clear title.
Right, so, and then, so if that goes through that way, the way you just described, what is the board deciding? I mean, we're running out of time, and I don't know if we really have a plan. Us as a board, I don't think anybody has said, this is the plan that we should follow, if in case those steps that Tom described now happen the way it happened. So, again, does anybody have any idea?
Well, it depends upon what the money is. If you have three million dollars, you have all those plans from years ago, A, B, and C.
At the beginning, I said if that, the referendum does not pass.
Well, if it doesn't pass, then you, you either just keep the lake the way it is, do the, take it over for town-wide property, two-to-two grant projects.
And I would like to hear from the rest of the board.
Oh, no, I know. I'm sorry.
I know you put out all the options out there.
You're looking right at me, so. I would pick up my plan right from there. Right from there, I would pick up my plan. I would start the grants, wait one year, see what comes up, bring in the public, get some sort of agreement with the public, some sort of consensus, then bring it up for another vote, to see what to do with the lake, and bring the community involved. Let everyone be involved in determining what to do with that rec area, if it's going to be a recreation area.
Hey, Peter, anything else?
No, no, I have nothing right now.
I mean, I'd, I'd use the grant money, and I'm not going to vote to spend a million dollars to go develop that area without the approval of everybody in the town.
I said that from the beginning, I mean, I don't want to spend no taxpayers' dollars.
But, in the same token, I don't know, and they've got a right to Hillside Lake people, after we decide that this is our plan, we're going to take that money, we're going to spend whatever grant money we get, and that could be the end of the project. I don't know if I was Hillside Lake, if I'd accept that. I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I think we have to be honest to them that says, we might spend this seven-hundred-thousand dollars and that's the end of the project. I think we almost need a third option that says, hey, this is a third option, it might cost a million dollars, plus you're going to get this money, do you want to keep the park district, because they can vote to retake their park district back, yes? And they pay for it, and it stays a private lake. You know, because once we take it, anybody in La Grange can come, anybody from New York City can come, anybody from Wappingers, I can go over to the lake, and the other big gripe we get in there at every meeting, and he's not here tonight, is one guy that lives at the beginning, he don't like the traffic in there. Hi Bobby, see you at home.
So, let me just add if I may, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, being that it's a special park district, the residents have the ability, if they choose, to ask the town to borrow money on their behalf to do whatever improvement they may want to do, just like any other district. If they dissolve that, they're basically forfeiting that right to down the road, come back and say, you know, we'd just like to borrow a million dollars, and we're willing to pay the, whatever it is a year, because we want it.
No, they can still take that back, I believe, after we come up with the solution.
No, I don't think so.
No, that's, he's saying that if we take it, and then they no longer.
If we dissolve it.
They forfeit that right, they'd have to repetition us to create the district, and that's not going to happen probably, so, I just know that they, that they realize that they forfeit that right later on, should they decide, you know what, give us something scaled down, and even though the rest of the town didn't want to participate, we do.
They still may want to.
We do, they forfeit that right. I don't know if they realize that.
But that's what I'm saying, after we decide, they have thirty days to petition us, whatever our decision is, correct?
Right, to have force of vote, right.
Force of vote.
Anything else?
I just want to thank the community again, we had a great primary election on Tuesday, I want to thank everybody that came out, and great turnout, and great for everybody all around, thank you.
Nick?
I have a list of schedule for Community Day, two o'clock will be the parade from, starting on Route eighty-two by Trinkle Lane, three o'clock to seven o'clock will be all the vendors, the food, the music, the raffles, three to five is a car show, three o'clock is also petting zoo and face painting, from three to seven to conical sport and racket tennis, they're going to have demonstrations at the tennis courts, and I hear they're really great, so you should go take a look at that. Four-thirty, there's a flag retirement ceremony by the East Fishkill Girl Scouts, and that's located right behind the library. There's a pit that was made there several years ago by an Eagle Scout to retire the flags. At five-thirty, the Wappingers Crew Club is doing their annual duck race, and that's by the pond near the gazebo. Six-thirty, they'll, they'll do the raffle drawing, and at seven-thirty is the, is the movie, and that is Mona. So, and that again is at seven-thirty.
And the car show's located where?
Car show is located at the top by the pavilion.
Is it?
Saturday.
This Saturday, yes?
This Saturday, don't miss it, Marty. Okay?
You're going to be on the parade, right? You will be on the parade.
You're not on the parade? You're on the float?
On the float.
On the float.
All right, Marty, you walk with me.
All right, in closing, or last I've got liaison report, police report, over the summer, the police department received two grants, one from DCJS for ten thousand dollars for updating the live-scanned fingerprinting and booking system, a second grant from Senator Susarino for twelve thousand dollars, the grant will also be put towards the completion of the live-scan upgrade. This week, the police department with the detective of the Duchess County Drug Task Force helped execute a search warrant on, in town, Blue Hill address, the raid resulted in one arrest and a sizable amount of heroin and marijuana, as well as cocaine and crack, cocaine was seized. The Duchess County Sheriff's Tactical Team and the U.S. Drug Enforcement Agency were also involved. Officer Phillips completed his patrol orientation and has been on patrol on the evenings from three to eleven shift, and the other new officer, Chipperino, is doing well in the Duchess County Police Academy and is one of the top students, his class. and is one of the top students, his class should be graduating in the end of November. Any other reports or any other business to bring? That's it, Manny? Good?
That's it.
I'd like to close the work session, the next Town Board meeting is September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, and we'll see everybody at Community Day.